All right, I see some familiar faces here. Don Goodhue, Carolyn Hardy, Ian Martin. It's nice to see all of you. Are we, are all the commissioners here yet? I don't see everybody. See Gail?
I don't see Stephanie.
See Robert? Bob?
Yes, he's here. Okay, all commissioners are here.
All right, Marjorie, are all the commissioners here? I don't see Stephanie or Chris.
Yes, they both logged on. I'm here.
Okay, all right. There's Stephanie, and there's Chris. Okay, is everybody ready to start?
Yes.
Okay, in that case, I'll call the special meeting of the Planning Commission of April 28 to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Christopher Bolden?
Here.
Robert Dells?
Here.
Al Lehman?
Here.
Stephanie Locke?
Here.
Michael LoPage?
Here.
Thank you.
Nice to see all of you. Okay. First item on our agenda tonight is public appearances. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak or address the Planning Commission on any matters which are not on the agenda tonight? Give you a couple, give me a minute here or so to see if you want to chime in or call Okay, I don't hear anybody. I'm assuming that there's nobody here to speak to the Planning Commission regarding matters which are not on our agenda tonight. So the next item on the agenda tonight are the public hearings. Before we start the public hearings, I want to make just an announcement about the procedures. We will be running a time clock of five minutes for applicants' presentations and three minutes for speakers. Applicants will also be given a three-minute rebuttal time. They want to make additional comments or respond to other comments that have been made regarding the application. So with that said, we will consider the first item on the public hearings tonight, which is a design review. This is DR 20350. This is located at the southwest corner of Fifth and Dolores. This consideration of a preliminary review workshop for the construction of a 22,978 square foot two-story mixed-use building with 12 apartment units and 15 retail spaces and a 15,211 square foot basement containing 27 below-grade parking spaces. Mechanical equipment storage located. This is the Urica Plaza project. Can we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Brandon Swanson with the Planning and Building. Mr. Evan Court will be presenting here momentarily, but just a brief sort of introduction. First, I wanted to let the Commission know that there were several late correspondences that were received for this item. Those have been bundled up and are available for the public to find on our city's website where the agenda is. So if anyone wants to find those, they're available as a link in the PDF for this hearing today on the agenda link. Secondly, I just wanted to sort of prime the Commission. So we are, we're here today for a preliminary workshop. Typically, a project has two stops at the Planning Commission. You have the preliminary design review and then the final design review. Both of those are actions by the Planning Commission where a resolution is adopted. This is a third sort of extra meeting today, very preliminary. The goal is to give the applicant and staff both some feedback from the Planning Commission and the public on the preliminary design. The hope is that those comments, some may be incorporated into the design that will come forward for the first sort of preliminary official hearing with the Planning Commission where a resolution will be adopted. So today, we're really focused on design of the project. Some of the technical data, things like, you know, traffic reports and water and things like that will be analyzed much more thoroughly once the design is finalized and we come forward for that first design review hearing. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Court. I just wanted to kind of set the stage for what the goal of today is, to get from the Planning Commission and the public.
Evan, could I interrupt you for one second before we get into the public hearings? I just wanted to let the public know that item number three on the public hearing agenda, Design Study 20196, has been continued to our May 12 meeting. Okay, Evan, would you proceed?
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. So the project site is located at the southwest corner of Dolores and Fifth in the Service Commercial Zoning District. The lot has been partially developed by a previously approved project, which allowed for the construction of two mixed-use buildings, although construction was halted in 2019 and the ownership of the property was later transferred. On December 15, 2020, a design review application was submitted for the construction of a 22,978 square foot two-story mixed-use building, meaning the building will be a mix of residential and commercial uses. The project is proposed to have 12 apartment units, none of which are proposed to be used as short-term rentals. Those units are proposed to be located on the second floor and mezzanine level with 15 commercial spaces located at the street level. A 15,211 square foot basement containing 27 below-ground parking spaces, storage, mechanical rooms, and a restroom is also proposed. Staff has provided a cursory review of the project in order to provide general analysis and address potential issues. This preliminary review workshop by the Planning Commission is intended to provide feedback to the applicant and does not constitute a guarantee of future approval. No action will be taken at this hearing, and a formal design review hearing will be required prior to any action being taken by the Planning Commission. The site is located in the Service Commercial Zoning District. Municipal Code Section 1714010B states the purpose of the SC zoning district is to provide appropriate location for services, offices, residential and limited retail activities that primarily serve local needs. This district is intended to provide a distinct transition between the more intense activities in the CC district and the less intense activities in the district on the periphery. Mixed use of commercial and residential activities are appropriate throughout this district. Additionally, General Plan Policy P3-2.1 states, "Continue to encourage mixed-use developments as a preferred development with," or excuse me, "as a development form contributing to the village character in all commercial districts," as well as General Plan Policy P1-8, which states, "Continue to encourage mixed land uses that create new second-floor apartments located over ground-floor retail and service uses in the commercial district on streets where patterns of second-story buildings already exist." In staff's opinion, the use of the building complies with the intent of the SC Zone District and related policies of the general plan. The applicant is proposing 12 residential apartment units on a 16,000-square-foot site, which works out to a residential density of 33 dwelling units per acre and is therefore required to have a conditional use permit. Due to the number of units proposed, there is no required affordable housing requirement with the associated density. Floor area is defined as the total combined area included within the surrounding exterior walls of all floor levels. Floor area includes all floor spaces used for commercial, manufacturing, residential, and miscellaneous land uses, including spaces occupied by mezzanine floors, interior walkways, storage areas above ground, hallways, restrooms, and both interior and exterior wall thickness. The floor area ratio for a two-story building in the SC zoning district is 135% of the site area, which works out to 21,600 square feet. The project is eligible for an additional 10% floor area bonus up to a maximum of 145% of the lot area or 23,200 square feet, as they provide inner block access from Dolores to Fifth, as well as from the project site to, from the project site to Lincoln Lane via the Lincoln Lane Development. The project proposes a 8,979 square foot ground level comprised of commercial business spaces, a 10,985 square foot second floor comprised of residential units, and a 3,014 square foot mezzanine level as a feature to seven of the residential units. The total square footage of the building is proposed to be 22,978 square feet. While the municipal code states no single structure shall contain no more than 10,000 square feet of floor area, the applicant has presented the proposal, has presented the proposal as two separate structures by incorporating two distinctly different architectural styles into the design, Tudor and Spanish. By using two different architectural styles, the building reads as two smaller buildings opposed to a single larger building that would appear out of character and scale for the village. Under the previously approved proposal for the site, a 23,539 square foot project was approved, with the project consisting of two architecturally differentiated buildings located on the same building site. And while this approach has been permitted in the past, the Commission may provide an alternative direction based on their current reading of the code. The basement level currently includes bathrooms and a gym in the proposed floor plans. The gym is not permitted to be located in the basement and will need to be relocated or removed in accordance with the municipal code, which states, "Additional underground floors not defined as a story may be authorized by a use permit when the use of these floors is expressly limited to the parking of vehicles, non-commercial storage, and mechanical equipment serving the building." Because the gym is a use that is not explicitly identified as an allowable use in the basement, the gym is not permitted in the underground floor space. Staff is supportive of, supportive of the inclusion of the bathrooms in the basement, provided it is included in the total floor area calculation for the site, as unlike a gym, there is no land use classification associated with bathrooms and that they function similar to that of mechanical equipment serving the building. Building coverage is defined as the total ground area of a site occupied by any buildings or structure. Building coverage includes exterior structures such as stairs, arcades, bridges, permanent structural elements protruding from buildings such as overhanging balconies, oriel windows, stories which overhang a ground-level story, and covered carports. Simply put, building coverage is the area of the footprint of the building as well as any projections extending beyond the building walls. The building coverage is proposed to be 14,039 square feet or 88% of the lot area. The allowable building coverage for a two-story building in the Service Commercial Zoning District is typically 80% of the site area. However, a 10% coverage bonus is also available for providing an inner block walkway as previously discussed. The remaining areas of the site that are not building coverage are considered open space for the site. A minimum of 50% of the required open space is required to be landscaped and may include non-living materials such as garden benches, water features, and pattern paving treatments. A landscape plan is currently being developed and has not been included in the preliminary plans, and the required open space areas have been identified in the green on the slide, although staff anticipates the landscape and landscape treatments will be incorporated throughout the whole project and not limited to just these open space areas. The maximum allowable building height shall be determined primarily by the design context established by the prevailing heights of nearby structures facing the same street or intersection and within the same pedestrian field of view, which is typically within 100 feet of either side of the, the structure or across the street. In the CC and SC zone districts, the, the main building and roof form of all structures shall be limited to a maximum height of 30 feet, and staff is requiring a survey to be submitted as part of the formal review to ensure that the height limit is maintained. The structure is proposed to be a maximum of 30 feet tall with minor architectural elements exceeding the 30-foot height limit. The building elements that exceed the 30-foot building height limit are two separate tower elements that are less than 10% of the building coverage. Municipal Code Section 1714150B states that small areas not exceeding 10% of the proposed building coverage and occupied by special design features such as towers, steeples, and ornaments may exceed these heights if approved by the Planning Commission. So staff is requesting that the Commission provide preliminary feedback relating to the tower elements that currently exceed the 30-foot height limit. Staff is also seeking the Commission's input regarding the exterior appearance of the building, most notably with respect to whether the building appears as a two- or three-story structure. Municipal Code Section 17.14.150A states, "No building shall have more than two stories above grade." However, a portion of the building maintains a three-story appearance due to the inclusion of stacked exterior balconies accessed via the second floor and mezzanine levels above the second floor. Commercial Design Guideline A3 states, "Building forms should complement rhythms established by other buildings in the immediate vicinity. Such patterns such as height, number of stories, width of storefronts, scale of building forms, eaves," or excuse me, "eve height, sizes of doors and windows should be used as guides to establish the context for newer remodeled buildings." And General Plan Policy P1-69 states, "Continue to control the scale and mass of both one- or two-story buildings through design review." While staff is supportive of the inclusion of a mezzanine level above the second floor, it is staff's opinion that the building should maintain a two-story appearance as viewed from the street. While a mezzanine may not be considered a story on its own, the inclusion of the stacked exterior balconies give the appearance that the building is in fact three stories tall, which would conflict with the zoning code, Design Guidelines, and General Plan. In respect to the, the building materials, the Tudor-style portion of the building is proposed to be finished with slate shingles, with the primary building finish being board and batten, with wood detailing throughout, with the lower level of the, lower level primarily finished with brick. And those materials are seen on the left side of the, the material sample board. The Spanish-style portion of the building is proposed to have a Spanish tile roof and primarily finished with a smooth mission-planted plaster with limestone trim incorporated throughout. Those materials are seen on the right side of the material board. And then the, the walking surfaces of the courtyard and details will include a combination of pavers and various tile treatments and will be incorporated throughout the building, and those are the materials seen in the, the middle of the sample board. With respect to the mechanical equipment for the building, staff is recommending all utility meters, vaults, and connections be located within the garage, driveway, or other mechanical enclosures and screened from the pedestrian walking surfaces. Staff is seeking feedback from the Planning Commission on these exterior mechanical elements as well. So staff recommends the Planning Commission review the preliminary project and provide feedback on the design to the applicant. Staff has identified certain areas for Planning Commission discussion and requests the Commission's input regarding these elements. However, any discussion does not need to be limited to these items. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Evan from the commissioners?
I do have one.
Mr. Dells?
Yeah, so for everyone to be aware, I'm, I'm a new commissioner and historical context on some things. This whole concept of a mezzanine, I mean, I'm used to a mezzanine being a second level over a lobby, really, and I'm wondering what the historical context here is for this concept of a mezzanine being essentially a floor above a second floor, which may be a third floor.
So the zoning code doesn't have a definition of a mezzanine. However, it does recognize mezzanine levels. In this case, it's defaulting to the building code, and it's my understanding that the building code doesn't specify what level the mezzanine is located on. I'm paraphrasing, and perhaps the architects can better answer this, as I'm not as familiar with the building code. But it, the way the definition works, the, the mezzanine can be located on any level. And again, it's not limited to the ground level. It's, it's basically how it's oriented.
Evan, the, the mezzanine serves the purpose of accessing the apartments on the second floor?
So it doesn't serve the purpose of accessing the mezzanine, or the, the apartments? It's a feature of the apartments. I don't think I can get zoomed in much more than that, but the, the areas you see in orange or, or yellow, I'm not sure how they're showing up on your screen, those are the mezzanines for the apartments below. So typically, it consists of a bedroom and a bathroom with the primary living space on the, the level below.
Okay, maybe we can get some more explanation about that from the architect. Are there any other questions for the, for the planner regarding this application? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Evan. Would the applicant like to make their presentation to the Planning Commission at this time?
Mr. Commissioner? Before we move on, Mr. Chair, would you like to have a five-minute timer for the applicant presentation?
Yes, I, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do have a five-minute time for applicant presentations, three minutes for the general public, and the applicant will have a, a three-minute rebuttal time, or to provide a destination after the public comments.
Thank you.
Okay, the applicant can go ahead. Thank you.
Brandon, can you hear me? This is Henry Runke.
Yeah, yeah, Henry, we got you. Go ahead.
Okay, before I start my presentation, I would like to introduce, make sure that the commissioners are aware that we also have on the line Chris Mitchell, who is representing the ownership, which is Pastore Real Estate. He's joining us very late at night from the UK. He was hoping to be able to just say hi. And then also, we have Seth Eddy, who is running their Carmel office for Esperanza Carmel. But if we could get Chris to be able to just say hi, give a little introduction, a few thank-yous, that would be much appreciated.
All right, well, they will be subject to the three-minute presentation time.
Okay, so we'll move them to after I present them. So anyhow, I just want to thank members of the Planning Commission, city staff, everyone who has helped get us to this point. My name is Henry Runke. I'm with Walt Runke and Dost Architects, and we've been working very diligently on this project. We started right at the beginning of COVID and have been working with staff to get to this point today. We've been working very closely with staff. We started meetings with them early on, discussed a lot of the issues that would be a consideration that we're talking about, and, and I'll briefly discuss some of the things that have come out of this. One of the things to keep in mind is that this is a half-built, or not half-built, partially built site, and so we are working with the underground garage, which is partially built. We're trying to work within the entrance and a lot of other parameters. We're also looking at the project from the perspective of how the project was originally approved. And the project was originally approved as a mixed-use project. It was a series of 16 apartment units over some retail, and it had the same number of parking spaces, it had the same mezzanine concepts that we're talking about tonight. So it's essentially, it's very similar. The big difference, I would say, is that we're actually smaller. We've got a smaller amount of square footage. We're around 22,978. The other project was 23,557. We've taken all of our mixed use, we've put it all on the upper floor. The other design had a mix of mixed use on the lower level and on the top level, and we've reduced the number of units. So we've gone from 12, or from 16 down to 12. So the, the site density has gone down, the square footage has gone down, I would argue even the height of the building has gone down based on the original plans. So we're actually a less impactful project when we look at that. The other thing that we have is we have a project that is a much more traditional type of a Carmel design. I know the other design was much more modern. It really, I know it was, been perceived as maybe two different designs, but it really looked like one big building of a similar nature when you looked at it. We wanted to work with staff, and staff really wanted us to differentiate the, the two sides of the building, and so we have a much more defined exterior, half being more of a Spanish eclectic Mediterranean and the other having more of a Carmel Tudor. The great thing that we have about the project moving forward is we've got a great developer that is able to come in and take on a very challenging project and to be able to have the resources to be able to pull it out of the ground and to move it forward. And so when you look at things like the materials that we're using, the colors, the amount of articulation in the building, there really is no expense spared. I think what you'll find is that if the building is developed as designed, it's going to be a very beautiful building, it's going to be very well detailed, it's going to be using premium materials, and I don't know that there's a lot of developers that would be proposing that type of an expense. We have, other than the gym, we've met all of the rules in Carmel as far as FAR, coverage, density, parking, so we're following all the rules. So really, I think it comes down to maybe more of an aesthetic issue, and the question is, you know, preference, because we are following the rules. So like I say, we've been working very closely with staff. We also went to the community in November and did a public outreach where we did present the design of the project. The overwhelming number of people that came to me and spoke to representatives of Pastore Real Estate, they were very positive. They liked the design, they liked the change, they liked the direction it was going, and they also felt it was much more appropriate and sensitive to Carmel. So with that, the other thing really quickly is the mezzanine was included in the original design. I know that came up with a question, so we've just followed through with the same type of concept. It doesn't have any impact on a change in square footage from the original, nor does it increase the height. So it's basically keeping the project the way it was. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do the commissioners have any questions for the architect? I don't see any hands up. I don't see any hands up. Commissioner Lehman?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see any other commissioner with any hands up or turning off their mute. So thank you, Mr. Runke. Would your other members of your team like to begin their presentations?
Chris?
Chris, are you there? If I can introduce myself, my name is Seth Eddy. I'm here locally in Carmel and I grew up just over the hill in Pacific Grove. And I just wanted to thank Chair LaPage and all the commissioners for their time today. Also, we've been working really hard with our team and with the city to get this project to a point that we were able to share it to the public again. And we're just happy that we were able to do that here today. So thank you guys very much and thank you, Henry. Chris, are you there? Maybe he's not here.
Okay.
Perhaps we can come back to him at the end.
Yeah, he can definitely speak at any time. What was your involvement with it specifically?
I work for Esperanza Carmel. I'm the project manager. I'm here local, located on Seventh, just between Lincoln and Monteverde.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you for your comment. Okay, at this time, we'll have members of the public make their comments. So I see, I'm assuming the people that I'm seeing here are here to speak on this. Don Goodhue is here. Would you like to begin the comments, Don?
Mr. Chair, if I could, before Mr. Goodhue begins, there is a raise hand feature here in Google. If you're participating, at least on your computer, you do have the opportunity to raise hand at the bottom of your screen. You can click on that. Unfortunately, we do not have the ability for those on a phone to raise their hand. We will next month when we switch over to Zoom. But if anyone who's on the computer would like to speak, you can raise your hand by clicking on that button at the bottom of your screen that says raise hand is towards the right-hand side. But we'll make sure that everyone who wants to speak gets a chance.
Yes, just chime in after the public speakers, each speaker, if you're not being acknowledged. Thank you. Go ahead, Don.
Well, greetings, commissioners. I'm Don Goodhue, resident of Carmel and a former planning commissioner. First of all, I commend the commission for giving this a separate hearing. This is a singularly important project, demands the utmost and from the architects to achieve an appropriate solution. We're not there yet by any means. I am not against this project, I'm against this iteration. I sent you a letter, and in that letter, I noted the fundamental problem is the pairing of two partially conflicting styles, both bad, with ticky tech fighting monumental. Let me read a few guidelines for you. Defining principles of variety, modesty, and simplicity. Building forms should complement other buildings in the immediate vicinity. Each building should be treated as a consistent whole. Unit identity is inappropriate if it imposes a hodgepodge of design elements. I feel this design is exactly such a hodgepodge, conflicting with every one of those guidelines. There's nothing like the two styles employed here in the immediate vicinity. If either of these forms were initially built and you came along with a second one, I don't see any way you could approve the second one. I wonder if people read the guidelines. I suggested compatible large projects, comparable large projects that speak to Carmel, such as the Cypress Inn or the Paseo Building Project. Doug Schmitz has noted several more for inspiration. I also refer to the street-level treatment, an unreleaved wall of storefronts crowding the street. Where are the civic gestures modulating the streetscape? We would expect indentations, cow openings, or alcoves, fountain sculpture, or landscaping. None exist. In my term on the commission, I think there's one mistake we made when we started entertaining minor changes around the edges versus sending a project back to the architects when fundamental flaws required it. I pray you don't repeat that now. I hope to give weight to the six former commissioners and two respected architectural historians, not to mention a former city manager. I urge the commission make no further consideration until the architects come back with an appropriate design expression. I hope the architects can rise to the occasion and help us get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. I'm going to just call on people that I can see and then we will go to the people that have called in. I'm not doing this in any particular order, it doesn't mean anything. I'm just gonna call on people I can see. So I see Carolyn Hardy is here. Would you like to make your comments?
Chair LaPage, if I could. It looks like some folks have begun raising their hands. If you look in the participants tab, the order is Dale Byrne, Ian Martin, Sally, Carmel Art, E.H. Beach, and then Carolyn Hardy. So if you want to, there's a list of folks that have their hands up if you'd like.
All right, well, I didn't have that tab open. I apologize. So let's, I'll use that. It's as good as anything. So Dale Burns, would you like to make your comments?
Thanks, Michael. I'm Dale Burns, speaking as a citizen and a volunteer for Carmel Cares, a nonprofit dedicated to keeping Carmel beautiful, safe, and inviting. That hole in the ground that I just looked down into a few minutes ago certainly isn't beautiful, it certainly isn't safe, and it certainly isn't inviting. It's an embarrassment to our city and a danger to the buildings around it. We are fortunate that an investor that happens to have a strong connection to Carmel by the Sea and happens to be one of the most competent developers in the world has taken an interest in solving this problem for our community. We're also fortunate that they're long-term investors, planning projects that will produce many long-term affordable rental units downtown, which everyone seems to want, sufficient underground parking, which everyone seems to want, and affordable retail spaces that you'd hope would make our town more inviting to young and innovative retailers. If you haven't studied their company's capabilities and track record, you should take the time to do so. They're extremely competent and well-financed. J.B. Pastor, who does business here as Esperanza Carmel, knows how to do successful projects in, by most measures, the most expensive and difficult sites in the world. I think the proposed plan that they've come up with is more in line with Carmel's character than the previous plan, and the building materials and fixtures they've showed today on site are high-quality and thoughtfully chosen. A positive partnership with Esperanza Carmel and the planning commission and the public, including some people with extensive experience, such as Doug, and we're gonna hear from some more tonight, I'm sure. And also the architects, who have made some interesting design comments in their letters. I think we can bring this project to the finish line as quickly as possible so we can turn our now infamous pit into a big win for our village and for the short and the long term. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. Okay, the next member of the public is Ian Martin, has his hand up. We're gonna recognize Ian at this time.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Ian Martin. I'm a former planning commissioner and a resident of Carmel by the Sea. And my business is located on the same block as the proposed building. I'll begin by saying that like everyone else, I'm sick of the pit and want to go away as soon as possible, and that we should all be grateful that the developer, at no small financial risk to himself, has proposed to save our downtown from that giant hole. This said, given the scale and prominent location of the proposed building, we as a community cannot lower our standards simply because we're tired of looking at the pit. Because whatever gets built there could easily be there for 100 years or more. It is a building that will shape the look, feel, and character of the downtown for the rest of our lives. We therefore need to hold this development to the highest standards. These standards are spelled out in the commercial design guidelines, which exist to help new buildings of the downtown harmonize with their surroundings. These guidelines appear to have been largely ignored. The two halves of the building don't even harmonize with themselves. There's more to be said about these shortcomings, but I'll focus on the proposal's failure to comply with a key statement in the commercial design guidelines, which is surprisingly absent in the staff report. It states, and I quote, "New buildings should not imitate styles of the past, but strive to achieve compatibility with the old," unquote. Since we cherish our history in Carmel by the Sea, we should not dilute its record by creating buildings that pretend to be from a different time. When we do, we blur the lines of our true history, which is reflected by building styles of different eras. Our village had its Tudor and Mediterranean periods in the early decades of the last century. To create more knockoffs of those buildings now muddies the lines of our history. What's more, recycling century-old architectural styles says to the world that our community is trapped in its past and has no original ideas of its own. That's hardly fitting for a town established to attract artists, intellectuals, and free thinkers. The proposed building also undermines a key aspect of what makes our village so magical, the diversity of its architectural styles. There are not too many of any one given style and plenty that are unique unto themselves. Coming across these individual buildings provides a wonderful sense of discovery, but as we continue to make fake versions of our historic buildings, the originals begin to feel less special. Think of the Concord Elegance Car Show. What makes that event so special is not only the beauty of those cars, but how unusual they are. When you see one in person, it's an occasion because they are so rare and so unusual. That sense of occasion would be sharply reduced if there were numerous replicas of them. The same holds true for the special buildings that make up our village. By mimicking the styles of a century past, we make the original examples feel more commonplace, and Carmel by the Sea's unique charm and character suffers as a result. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ian. The next member of the public has her hand up is Sally Carmel Art. Would you like to speak to the, at this time, Sally?
Hello, I'm not Sally.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm using her computer, so that's great. So I'm, my name is Jeff Beckham, and I am with the Carmel Artist Association, next door to the pit. And we spent, well, until last year, we spent five years rebuilding the art association, working on the interior and problems with the exterior. Finally got it all finished when they dug the pit in our building, as slowly falling into it ever since. I'm really hoping that you can find a way to get them, get the new developer to start at least completing the work on the garage so that the sand dune doesn't continue to slide and we don't go with it. We are concerned a bit that, our building's a one-story building, it's sitting atop a short rise, but it is going up against a pretty tall building. And we do hope that something can be done to alleviate some of the feeling that we're going to be dwarfed by the new building. They started to do that at the very front of, on the street with a small gable that lowers down to kind of meet our property, but it only goes back a very short distance before it pops back up as a solid block wall. And so I'm hoping that that can maybe be extended, the sloped roof, and not make us feel like we're the doghouse in the neighborhood. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is, I believe that's Victoria Beach. Victoria, would you like to address the planning commission?
Hey, Michael, thank you. You're on to me now. Sorry, I don't know why my mom's Google account is showing up. So of course, I'm grateful for anyone addressing the pit. I'm, oh, by the way, I'm Victoria Beach. I was a former planning commissioner. For those who haven't met me, I want to welcome the developer. I was also mayor pro temp for a time. I'm also an architect. And I want to thank you for addressing this eyesore, of course. I do think a major mistake has been made. Maybe it's an easy mistake to make. One comes to this community new and looks around and sees so much history that it might be easy to assume that we want more of that. But as Ian Martin quoted, this, the first, very first guideline in our business district guidelines is that new buildings should not imitate styles of the past. If we want to change that guideline, we can do that, but we cannot do it through a project. We cannot, the point of the guideline is to not give us a Disney-type town. I was, for a time, another role I played was the National Chair for the American Institute of Architects. That is a body that determines, the National Chair for the National Ethics Council of the American Institute of Architects, that's a body that determines whether architects are hewing to the standards of their communities. I will tell you that this is a very serious deviation from our standards, not just in the terms of the style of the building, but of course, the size of the building. This has to be two separate buildings. And also, I'm curious about the mezzanine issue. But, you know, architects have been in trouble with the AIA for less than this. I do not want this to happen to this project. I don't, I think the architect is very capable and can align the project with the design guidelines and with the community's regulations. But it is a serious matter that needs to be addressed and I, it is worth getting this right, as Don Goodhue has said, as Ian Martin has said. There's, I don't know how it got so far down this path, but we need to go right back to the drawing board and with a new approach before we see this again. And again, thank you for taking this seriously, planning commission, by having a special meeting to address this very important project. There has never been a project of this size that has taken a historicist's approach, that has gotten through the planning commission and the council. It has not happened. I was a witness myself for a couple attempts, and I don't think it'll happen in the future as well. So thank you very much for the, for listening.
Thank you, Victoria. I believe Carolyn Hardy has, the next person have her hand up.
Thank you, Michael. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. And for those listening, I'm Carolyn Hardy. I'm a former city council member. And I'm happy to see that the developer is willing to take on this huge, complex problem. But I agree with many of the comments of Don Goodhue and Ian Martin regarding this project. If I can maybe be more direct about its design, it has such a Disneyland appearance and the look of false fronts that no quality materials on these designs can, it would only be like putting lipstick on a pig, in my opinion. It reminds me of the town of Windsor, if any of you have ever driven through Windsor, California, who have built it so quickly and just cheaply, that there's a lot of false fronts to buildings and it looks phony. I think the thing that bothers me about this is there's no, it doesn't fit into any context of the block. It has no harmony with other buildings on the block. And it doesn't fit into this, the scale of the neighborhood. Even though you're entitled to the height of the buildings, Eric Dyer's previously-approved design for that corner, as I recall, had a stepped appearance to it, and that looked a lot better. As far as the deck above, I think some people view that as a third story, and there's no such outdoor deck in any structure in Carmel for residential use. This would be a first. And as you might recall, the planning commission, some years back, denied a rooftop deck on a house on Ocean and Carpenter. The bathrooms in the garage certainly aren't needed if there's no gym there, if it's only a garage for the building. Any resident there can use their own restrooms, unless these restrooms wouldn't be servicing the retail. But it seems like a waste if they take away the gym. Why in the world you would still need bathrooms in a garage? It's kind of odd to me. And I, you know, I don't know if the architect really had discretion with the design or if he's working to please his client, but it seems like every decade and every era should have a style. And I personally felt that Eric Dyer's previous style worked into the context of the town better than this imitation of the past. And I sure hope that the architects and the clients will go back to the drawing board and start over, because this just doesn't fit. It just has too many false looks to it and just misses out on the context. So thank you. Appreciate taking the time.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, I see that Chris Mitchell is, is this the Chris Mitchell with the project, I believe? Mr. Mitchell?
Can you hear me?
Can, yes, thank you.
My apologies, as fate would have it, my laptop was having technical problems with the microphone. I don't wish to re-present the project, I just wanted to introduce myself briefly. My name's Chris Mitchell from Pastor Real Estate, as Henry described, I serve as the managing director of Esperanza Carmel, which is the developer for this, this project. Some of you met me before I gave the initial public presentation last November for both this project. this project and the JB Pastor Project, which is also on Dolores by Seventh Avenue. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the Planning Commissioners for this meeting today, as well as to thank Brandon and Evan, both for their, their time today, as well as in the lead-up to today's meeting. We've really enjoyed working with the, the city's team on this exciting and important project for our company and Carmel, and look forward to progressing further following today's meeting. That was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, I don't, I don't see any other hands up. Are there any other members of the public that have called in that want to address Planning Commission regarding this application?
If you're on the phone and you'd like to address the Planning Commission, please go ahead and hit star six, that'll unmute your phone. Star six on your keypad, whether it's a landline or a cellphone, will unmute you and you can speak with the Planning Commission.
It doesn't appear that we have anybody else who would like to address the Planning Commission. Would the, would Mr. Runke like to have, make some follow-up comments? He has an additional three minutes. Would you like to take advantage of that?
Sure, thank you very much. So I'll, I'll make it brief, because I only have three minutes anyway. The, just to clarify, the, the gym, which was discussed being in the parking garage area, is actually a fitness room that's proposed for the residents. It's not a commercial space. It would just be used as an amenity for the, the residents, as would be the roof deck that I think was mentioned by one of the speakers. The restrooms that are in the garage area are more related to service people that would be maintaining the building, and it would also be for the shop owners to have restroom facilities, so that they wouldn't have to build one within each one of their spaces. So that's the purpose of the restroom. And I know there's been a lot of comment about style. And the style of the building, the original design was something that the developer did not like at all.
I think we're, we've lost your, the audio on Mr. Runke. There you are, you're back.
Okay.
You might want to repeat your comment. We just, we lost a few seconds of audio there.
Okay, I was just mentioning that the ownership did not like the original design. And I don't think that they would be inclined to go back into that direction. The original concept that was hoped was actually for more of a Mediterranean for the entire project. But after working with staff, we, we developed a couple of different design alternatives. The other thing is the side of the building that faces the Carmel Art Association. I don't know if, if you've seen the plans and noticed, but we have a mural that is going on, the piece of wall that faces the Carmel Art Association. And that would be something that would be sponsored by the developer to beautify that wall. And that wall is actually lower in profile than the wall in the original proposal. So we've tried to be sensitive to the neighboring property. And our goal is to get construction started as quickly as possible, so that we can minimize any additional damage that may be occurring on adjacent development sites. So we really would like to get the process moving as quickly as possible. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Runke regarding the project from the commissioners? I don't see anybody raising their hand or...
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Runke. Okay, is there anyone else from the public who is calling in? As Director Swanson said, if you press star six, that will unmute you, then we can hear you. I don't hear anybody.
Hello?
Oh, there we go. Yes.
My name is Avoli Kent.
Okay, Avoli, yeah, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I am a resident of Carmel, and I live around the corner from the pit. And I briefly looked at the pictures that were presented online. And when it's supposed to look like two buildings, is each face, each long side on Fifth and on Dolores, are they the same? And then when you go around the corner, is it different? Or when you're facing the project, say from Dolores, looking at the, the project, are there two different styles? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
It looks to me like one long style on Dolores is one style, long side on Fifth is another style. Is that true?
As I understand it, the, on Dolores, you have a Tudor and a Mediterranean. And the Mediterranean style is on the corner of Sixth, so that, as you're on Sixth, you're going to see the Mediterranean style.
Okay, so it goes around the corner. So if you're looking on Sixth, on Fifth. Did you say Sixth?
I believe it's Sixth. Yes, I believe that's Sixth Avenue, but I will, I'm going to let, after your comments, I'm going to, your comments, I'll let the architect answer this.
If it's supposed to look like two buildings, I would think when you're either on Dolores or on Fifth, that each side would look like two buildings. And I want to know if that's happening. And this gentleman that was just speaking was talking about a bathroom in the garage. And I would think that the shop owners, however many of them there are, would like a bathroom on the first story there, rather than having to run down to the garage to go to the bathroom. That's all.
All right, thank you, Avoli.
And also, I think there should be a setback. Wait a minute, I don't know if I've got three minutes. But I think that it's always good when there's a setback on the second story, rather than, you know, the first story and the second story be on the same plane, because it's just so massive looking, rather than a setback of, you know, five feet, 10 feet, whatever it is.
All right, thank you, thank you, Avoli.
Goodbye. See you later.
Okay, would the architect like to answer the question about the, how the building looks on each street? Mr. Runke, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Why don't you give us a quick answer on that?
Sure. So on the Dolores elevation, Dolores is quite a long side on this property. So if you were to look straight on Dolores, what you would see would be, half of the street would be, or maybe two-thirds of the street would be more of the Tudor Carmel style. And all, and then from that point to the corner, what you would see is more of a Mediterranean look. If you were to look on Fifth, what you would see is a Mediterranean look. So what it really looks like is a corner building that is Mediterranean, wraps around the corner. And then it looks like a separate building between that building and Carmel Art Association, which would be more of the Carmel Tudor design.
Thank you, Mr. Runke. Appreciate that. Okay, do we have anyone else in the public that would like to make comments regarding this application?
Mr. Chair, it looks like Steve Dallas has raised his hand.
Okay, Steve, you want to...
Yes, good afternoon, Chairman Lepage, Commissioner Steve Dallas. I just would like to echo, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you to have this on a special meeting. I think these big projects need these special meetings where we have time to discuss, time to review as a community. And I'd like to each of you to listen again to what Commissioner Goodhue said, Chairman Goodhue said, Ian Martin, who was a commissioner, Victoria Beach, who was on the Planning Commission and City Council, Councilmember Hardy, what she said, and former Chair, Chairman Ramers, on the Planning Commission, as well as City Council. I think they all had wonderful points. I think some of the big sticking points that I think you all need to take a definite look at are those setbacks, as Commissioner Goodhue had stated. Also, the deck that a lot of people had stated, if you look at page A401 of the cutout sheet, that deck looks right over the, the, the foundation's apartments. I mean, it's right up against it. And this would be the first project, as Councilmember Hardy said, in the city that would have a rooftop deck. I think that's precedent-setting. And the other one thing that comes to mind is, I, I don't have the sheet in front of me, but if you look at the, the elevation or the floor plan of the pathway that goes between the two buildings that the staff had mentioned, it has gate. And we've never had gates put on projects where we can, we the public can easily access, whether it's in the middle of the day or the middle of the evening, to access that inner block walkway. And they get a bonus for that, as, as our staff has, has stated. So I think those gates are something that you all should take a look at in the long run. But if you remember this project when Mr. Dyer had it, there was very little opposition. And I think this is the first project that I've seen in years with all these people that have come out, that have either served on a commission or served on city council, to say something negatively or needs a lot more work. We all don't like the pit sitting there. I'll be the first to admit it. But when the architects, I think, stated something that they want to get started immediately, and we have an art association where they say it's some issues of, of fault or crumbling, I believe the city would still issue a permit for them to shore up all the adjacent buildings. So I don't see why the architect and the builder or the project manager couldn't do that immediately. They've had it for months. And so I'd like to see that go forward, but, you know, so those other buildings that are historic have that opportunity so they don't fall in or have any more damage done to them. I thank you all for your time, and I do really appreciate this special meeting. It makes life a lot easier so we can discuss it well before it goes down a different path. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Steve. I don't see any other hands raised. Director Swanson? I know, I know we had a number of letters. We had a letter from a former planning commissioner, Julie Went. Is there a possibility that could be read into the record?
We can, if, if that's what you'd like, Mr. Chair, I can, I can pull that and I can read it into the record.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be good in this discussion.
Okay, give me just, just one moment, please.
Thank you.
Chair Lepage, we still have some hands up. I see Gail Lehman. I don't know if she meant for that to be up, but Carolyn Hardy has her hand up again. And then Steve Dallas still has his hand up, which he just spoke to.
Okay, as far as the commissioners, I'm going to wait until we close the public comments to recognize the commissioners. Normally, we just allow one three-minute comment. We're not allowing rebuttals. This time, we're...
My camera may be on, so you should probably stay back.
Okay, Chris Campbell also has her hand up.
Mr. Swanson, do you want me to recognize some of these other people? And let you get your, get that letter up.
Yeah, just, I'm scrolling through the correspondences. As I mentioned, there were a few. So let me just, it, it's up to you if you'd like to take a public comment, and then I can go at the end with reading the...
All right, all right. So is, I thought Chris Campbell already spoke.
No. No.
Okay. Is this Chris Campbell?
Yes, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Okay, go ahead.
My first comment is I cannot wait until you switch to Zoom, because I have had great problems with Google Meet today. I just want to speak briefly. I'm just a Carmel resident, but I worked until my retirement in 2018 at a law firm on that same block. And I really want to echo the sentiments of a number, the majority of the speakers, about the, the fact that I can't wait for the pit to be filled. This seems like a remarkable firm and developer, but I think this is all wrong for our city. It, it looks like a monolith with two fake fronts. I think that the, even the prior plan, which I wasn't that crazy about, was better than this. I think there needs to be a, a variety in terms of the level and the spacing and this notion of kind of repeating some of what, to my taste, were style mistakes of, of past decades, is a grave mistake. And I think with this kind of talent, we have an opportunity to, to really make something that will be a treasure for 100 years and transform that part of our town in a, in a way we can all be proud of. So I really hope that, that the planners can get back to the drawing board and come up with something we will all fall in love with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Swanson, have you found that letter?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do appreciate the promotion. I am just a director, I am not a commissioner at this point.
I'm sorry. Well, actually, it's a non-paying appointment, so you don't, you're doing well where you are.
I appreciate that. Let me, let me stop sharing my screen, and I do have the letter that I can read for you. I'm sorry, just one minute. All right. Close this. And get to my correspondences. Thank you for your patience. I'm running a couple of different screens here. All right. This is a letter from Julie Went, resident of Carmel by the Sea, dated April 27th, 2021, to Chair Lepage and members of the Carmel Planning Commission regarding DR 20-350, consideration of preliminary review workshop. Dear Lepage, dear Chair Lepage and Planning Commission members, as you know, I sat on your commission when we approved the original project on the site, which was designed by Carmel architect Eric Dyer. That design was fresh, original, and blended into the streetscape. Perhaps most importantly, it adhered to Carmel's commercial design guidelines and historic preservation precepts. It did not imitate or copy historic building styles in the village commercial core. The proposed design falls far short of that mark and should not be approved. It is obvious that the city has problems with "the pit," which is in quotations, which has remained partially constructed for years, but it is inappropriate to solve that short-term problem at the expense of good design and the historic and commercial design guidelines of the city. This is an important intersection in our village, and whatever is approved will assume enormous significance in perpetuity. This proposal should be rejected and complete redesign required by the Planning Commission. Newly-designed infill buildings in the commercial area should be compatible with Carmel's traditional village character, not mimic or copy the old, emphasized, which can create a false sense of historic development in the city. Copycat architecture diminishes the margin, and marginalizes the integrity and unique quality of our historic downtown buildings, while simultaneously introducing an unimaginative and even cloy element in the downtown. There is a statement in Carmel's commercial design guidelines that perfectly makes that point, in quotations, "Carmel is an ongoing celebration of enlightened architectural eclecticism." Unquote. The commercial design guidelines succinctly state, quote, "New buildings should not imitate styles of the past, but strive to achieve compatibility with the old." Unquote. I would also like to raise my concerns regarding the proposed extremely large 2,405 square-foot rooftop, rooftop deck. Noise, lighting, music, and large numbers of people on the deck that size will intrude into our traditional village character, and it is not consistent with the general plan. Policy 1.1-51 states, quote, "Through a design review, require architectural and site design within the commercial and multifamily districts to be compatible with the traditional village character." Unquote. Page two. In my opinion, the extremely large rooftop deck could create a more intense activity than is appropriate in the SC district. The SC district is a buffer zone and is, quote, "is intended to provide a distinct transition between the more intense activities of the central commercial district and the less intensive activities in the districts on its periphery." Unquote. I hope you will reject the proposed project design and require a complete redesign. Thank you, Julie Went.
Thank you, Director Swanson. Okay, I, there's a couple of hands up here, but those people have already spoken. there's a couple of hands up here, but those people have already spoken. Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken to the, from the public to the Planner, uh, Planning Commission regarding this application? If you would like to speak to us, you need to speak, uh, push, uh, star six to unmute. Okay, I don't hear anyone, so I'm gonna close the public comments and open it up to my fellow commissioners for their comments. Who would like to start? Nobody's jumping in, so, uh, I'm gonna call on Commissioner Lehman first. Would you like to begin, Commissioner Lehman?
Sure, I would. Uh, thank you, Manco, or Chair Manco, LePage. Um, but I want to thank the public for all the interest and all the comments, um, this evening. Uh, we've had great response in um, correspondence, lots of letters to read, and, um, I think it's wonderful that the town can get together and, um, and talk and, and, and voice their opinion. So I'm, I'm, I'm really, I'm, once more, I'm a happy resident of Carmel by the Sea. I think Mr. Pastor is to be complimented for his interest in Carmel by the Sea and his financial commitments to the city's real estate, which are numerous. His interest in investments are very welcome here. However, this design is not appropriate for Carmel for this very important site. I, about twenty-five years ago, um, the late George Brooke Coslow designed a very allegedly contemporary building, um, which, um, finally got built only with the downfall of the whole Planning Commission, um, when Clint Eastwood became the mayor. Uh, Clint, of course, had an interest in the building. And, um, but I think it's, it's a, it's a fine example of putting a super building in Carmel. And it's, it's wonderful. It's wood, and it's warm, and it's, um, and it's an exciting, um, design that was contemporary then and probably still is contemporary. It fits in with, um, with this century as well as the last century. Um, I, um, Doug Schmidt, who was our former city administrator twice, um, as those of you recall, that he came back to kind of bail us out of a terrible situation. And, um, he, he's, he's really a historian. And he put together a wonderful, um, history of Carmel in the comments and the letter that was sent to us today. And I hope you all get an opportunity to read it if you haven't already. Um, he makes, um, really extraordinary points. And, um, he's, um, he says, "The final project placed upon this land will be anchored to the village landscape for a century or more." And that is something that's so true. Um, it's so easy to go back to the drawing board or to your CAD system now and redesign a building. And I speak from years, decades of being in this business. Um, but it is very hard once you pour concrete to change your mind. So I, you know, I, I think it's wonderful that Doug really and, and Don Goodhue are pointing the way to, um, to find a, a better design, a new, a better design for Carmel. And I, I, I'm not, um, trying to denigrate, um, Mr. Runkie. Um, I think his firm is, is well-known and, and respected on the peninsula. But I don't think this, um, this is at all appropriate for Carmel. Um, Mr. Runkie, in fact, had made a comment at the last meeting, at the planning, at the actual planning commission meeting, not the special meeting. And he said, he was hoping that perhaps we could get an approval tonight, which of course, this is not the purpose of this meeting. Um, but, um, I, I, because he felt he was, they were anxious, the developer was anxious to get going. Um, there was a way to speed up the process. The Planning Commission had already approved Eric Dyer's wonderful design. And, um, it's, it's a credible design. It fits in well with the, with the, with the village. It fits in well with the block. And it really could be shovel-ready in a short amount of time with, and I don't know if their engineering was already done, but it could be ready to go. Um, but of course, this is the developer's choice. It's his money. And if he doesn't want to build something that's already been approved by the Planning Commission, so be it. But in order for me to vote for, um, an approval, um, on this, it would have to be substantially changed to meet our guidelines. It does not meet the guidelines right now. Okay, I am done.
Uh, Commissioner Lehman, um, staff also asked for some direction on a number of points. I'll just read those quickly. Uh, one was the, uh, the three-story, uh, visual character that the mezzanine and its treatment causes with the balconies. Uh, the other was the height of the towers. The other element that he asked for comment on was the exterior mechanical elements of the building. So those are three things that staff asked for some input. So before you finish comments, uh, I don't know if you'd like to make any comments on that, if you have any thoughts, before we go to the next commissioner.
Well, I would, I would hope that, I wouldn't make any comments on this right now, mostly because I, I don't think these buildings, these two designs or this one building, I don't think it works. I don't think it works square footage-wise. I don't think it works design-wise. And so the roof projections will be different, I would hope, in, um, in a new design. And I think these, these items need to be, you know, reserved for when we concede a new design. As far as I'm concerned, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, and I'm not speaking for them.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate those comments.
And Chair LePage, thank you for that. We, staff, Mr. Court has put that slide back up on the screen for the other commissioners if they do wish to comment on any of those requested areas for input.
Okay. Um, all right. Uh, let's move on to our next commissioner's comments. Um, Commissioner Locke, would you like to make comments at this time?
Sure. Um, I would probably say that, one, I, um, agree with Commissioner Lehman on her points. Um, but I do want to give my thoughts about the project. Um, I do also appreciate the many comments that we received from the public. We all want to resolve the pit. And, uh, we rarely have an opportunity for a second bite at the apple in a project of such significance. So this time, we really need to get it right. Um, I do appreciate Mr. Pastor's commitment to our town and hope he'll listen to the voice of the town as we, um, attempt to provide the information so that we can get this done right and beautifully. Um, my big issues with the current project, um, it lost its affordable housing element. And that, to me, is a very, very big deal. Um, we had four units in the previous project, two low-income, two moderate income. Um, I would really like to see that come back if possible. Um, our town is desperate for affordable housing, and most people can't afford to live here. And there are very few affordable rentals in our community, especially now. Uh, my second biggest issue with the whole project has to do with the inner block walkway. Um, that was a big point of the project to begin with. Um, Mr. Ipsen, who, um, remodeled Lincoln Lane behind this project, um, actually expanded, uh, part of his project and redesigned it so that he could have a four-foot, uh, walkway, uh, between his project and this one. So, um, I'm very concerned that there is no welcoming, um, element in this proposal. There's a door between the building and the walkway, and our walkways are, are a very special, unique, um, piece of Carmel. Um, I want to, want to be absolutely sure that we have this very inviting secret walkways to go check out. Um, "The commercial design guidelines encourage courtyards and inner block walkways as an important design feature of the commercial district, providing pedestrians with the anticipation of the unusual swift and gratifying shifts in prospect and often intriguing connecting routes between two or more streets defining a block." Um, so this is, this is, again, really important to me. The previous proposal, Design Review eighteen zero seven seven, included the relocation of a portion of the existing inner block walkway to facilitate new elevator to serve the residential units. The relocated walkway, and this was Mr. Ipsen's project, had to be four feet wide, so that the previous, um, walkway was only two foot ten inches. So he made the effort to get the walkway on his property so that it could connect into this property. I want to see that that happens, um, and that it, that it becomes something that is easily accessible to the public. There's no door. There's no potential for a door to swing out into the stairway walkway or into the walkway from the stairways, which I think the current plan showed, um, that could potentially impede public access. Um, anyway, that is extremely important to me, as well as the affordable housing. So as far as, um, mass and scale, um, the service commercial district is supposed to transition from commercial to residential. In my opinion, this is a massive mixed-use building, and it's not a transitional building. Um, I agree with commenters that the building, to me, does loom over the street because, uh, the second, second and mezzanine stories, um, are, are fairly close and, and fairly, um, I guess, in that area. Um, in addition, there are no two-story buildings on the block. And I think that's an important thing to note. The proposed project is not only a very large two-story building. And, and when I say a building, it is a building, even though it appears to be two buildings. Um, but it includes the mezzanines in the units and stacked balconies, and that makes it appear to be a three-story building. So I, I have a problem with that. I think it should be a two-story building. Um, I think the mezzanines should be looked at as an additional floor, but I understand the California Building Code does not consider a mezzanine to be a separate floor. Uh, but it does increase the height of the project. I'd like to see the project redesigned with a transition from the commercial to residential in mind. I'd like to see the project appear to be multiple buildings with quaint shops and residences and alcoves. And, um, as Mr. Goodhue talked about, that the commercial area would, um, have doors set back in alcoves and, and different frontage on, um, Dolores Street. And finally, I think whatever moves forward needs to be reflagged, and I mentioned this to Evan today, um, to be able to see the impact of the proposal. Um, I was disappointed that you couldn't see where the proposed rooftop deck was on the west side of the building. And yet I do understand that this is a very preliminary review. And given that fact, I wouldn't even consider trying to, um, make any proposal to approve a project on this at this point until we see how it is flagged. Um, large rooftop deck, I am not in favor of that part of the project. Um, as we've heard from the public in comments submitted to the commission, this element does not fit in with the transition between the commercial and residential areas of the town, nor does it necessarily fit in with any area of our town. Um, a rooftop deck of that magnitude in the commercial area, um, would certainly cause, um, impacts on the residential around it. Um, its location would impact the housing to the west, which is foundation housing, and would potentially have noise impacts for a distance if there were a large gathering. And that size of, uh, the proposed deck is larger than most of the houses in Carmel, so I think clearly that size of the deck would be ripe for, um, having large gatherings. Courtyard. The previous project was going to integrate the Art Center's work into the publicly available courtyards. The proposed project does not seem to have any, what I would call, public-friendly inviting space, and it appears to have gates that restrict access to the ground floor. I think the space should be open and accessible, particularly to access the inner block walkway. Um, the former project also included an accessible ramp between the Art Center and the courtyard and provided a direct route through to Fifth Avenue from the Art Center. And I think that, um, that concept of integrating the Art Center with the project, um, was a, a good one. Um, landscaping, the previous project offset some of its mass by incorporating green roofs and planters into the project and trees into the courtyard. This made it less ominous, in my opinion, and more palatable from uphill and from the windows of the buildings to the west. Um, the previous project also was seeking LEED certification. So in addition to green roofs that would help to reduce stormwater runoff and soften the architecture, um, they also had a proposal for solar. And I don't know if that is part of this proposal, or it should be in a future proposal. Sorry, this is gonna take me a second more, but, um, okay, this, this project proposes fifteen commercial spaces versus three in the previous project. And they're much smaller commercial spaces, but nonetheless, there are more commercial spaces. In my opinion, the proposed project looks like a mall on the lower floor with the numerous commercial spaces and windows. Mr. Doug Schmidt sent us a letter that referenced the potential impacts of traffic and services. One of his concerns had to do with the economy in regards to the addition of fifteen new commercial spaces. I have to agree with that. The former developer stated that his vision was that there would be, that the, the commercial spaces would be used for residential support, which is also this transition zone in the service commercial district. He, he identified, um, potential tenants as a salon or, or a spa nail business, a small market, or a medical use. And I think those are appropriate. I'm concerned that we have an ongoing number of vacancies in town, particularly during the pandemic, and that we may not need more spaces for shops that potentially cater primarily to our tourist population. I'd like to see the commercial spaces scaled down and enlarged to allow for residents-serving businesses. I'm also concerned about the traffic impact of fifteen new commercial spaces and the deliveries and pickups from those businesses, and that impact on the availability and accessibility to the post office. Everyone pretty much in town uses the post office, and many of us count on finding parking in that facility, in the, or in the area of the facility. This project will impact parking availability in the area and will affect accessibility, especially when trucks are making deliveries. As far as the other questions that were brought up, utilities in the sidewalks, in the sidewalks in general, utilities should be located not in the sidewalks. Um, I would like to see that. Um, also, I didn't see that there were multiple water meters on the location, and they will be required to have water meters and need to plan for that. Um, again, I have a very deep concern about putting any kind of gates on access to the, um, central area or the, um, the, the center of the building. Tower elements, I don't support going higher. I think that we need to find a way to work within the existing, um, height limits. And I think that probably concludes my, my, uh, comments on this. So anyway, thank you, everybody, for everything that you've done to provide input to us.
Thank you for those, uh, very good, uh, comments, Commissioner Locke. Very detailed. Okay, um, Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make your comments at this time?
Sure, let me see if I can get my screen to look so I can see myself. Well, first of all, thank you, uh, fellow commissioners. Thank you to the public. Thank you to the, uh, developer for this proposal. Um, unfortunately, I do not feel that this proposal meets our basic design guidelines for the commercial district and should be rejected wholesale. Um, I won't think I need to make a ton of comments about this. They've been said, uh, well by not only my fellow commissioners, but also by some of the letters you've received. But I'll hit a few highlights. First of all, in the zoning, uh, the district is intended to provide a distinct transition between more intense central commercial and between more intense central commercial and less intense periphery uses in the service commercial, and this project fails that completely. It's a massive building. It's more appropriate in central commercial or in central commercial of another city. Departments may help with that a small amount, but I'm also very concerned that there there is no inclusion of any affordable housing. And I assume this will be all be market rate. Also, any proposal that's going to come forward is not going to get my support without some kind of provision preventing short-term rentals. I think this project fails in the floor area. It's one giant building. That's all there is to it. It looks like they have a facade on one street elevation that's not especially well-designed and fails all of our design guidelines. And that's insufficient to call this two buildings, and we have a 10,000 square foot limit. Let's see, keep on going down my list here. I have a problem with the interior courtyard. It's not especially welcoming to the public. The gates are confusing, and I don't understand why there'd be gates on inner block walkways, and we would never approve any kind of inner block walkway proposal, especially with a bonus floor area that does it that has gates on the paths. I don't understand that at all. I'm not even sure that it would connect appropriately to Lincoln Street as designed right now. Let's see, keep on going down with this. I'll just address a couple of things that are directly on Evan's staff report. Can I get that thing on the screen again? Let's see here. Inclusion of restrooms in the basement, I'm not going to bother with that. The building's square footage is too large, I already addressed that. Roof projections, I do not support any projections beyond the 30-foot limit. In fact, I think no project probably will be approved, or I don't think it'd gain my support in this location with anywhere near a 30-foot limit. It's not appropriate because the adjacent structures, we don't have three-story, certainly, structures on the street, and we don't have any two-story structure on the street. This project dwarfs the appearance of the Carmel Art Association building and presents an enormous and attractive wall, no matter what art is on it, to the side of that building. Let's see here. I do not support any kind of rooftop deck in any way, especially not a third-story rooftop deck. It's totally inappropriate for Carmel. It's enormous space that would be used, obviously, for entertaining and would propose all kinds of problems for the neighbors. Utility and service equipment screening, of course, must need to be screened well and better than this design provides. No amount of high-quality building materials will make up for the fact that this project simply fails at the very basic level. The commercial design guidelines, "New buildings shall not imitate styles of the past, but strive to achieve compatibility with the old." Renovations and modeling projects should take into account the possibility that a structure might not meet criteria, might meet criteria as a historic resource by state or federal agencies. This project is extremely important. It's going to be there for 100 years potentially. It's going to set precedent and use as a guideline for future projects. And it must therefore meet all of our commercial design guidelines. I'm not going to go down the list of our commercial design guidelines it fails. It fails nearly all of them. And so I am in no way supporting this project. It needs a complete redesign. I think that's it for the moment, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Dells, would you like to make your comments at this time?
Yeah, thank you. As the new guy, it is helpful to go last, and I appreciate that. And I've learned a lot from my fellow commissioners, as usual, in particular about the previously approved design. Because really, all I'd seen before was pictures and did not benefit from the process. And particularly Stephanie Locke helped me understand all the work that went into that. Can we have somebody unmute? Sorry. As I'm still figuring out this job of being a planning commissioner, I realized that I am a planning commissioner and a design review commissioner. We we wear both hats. And as I'm starting to look at projects, I realized that I need to wear the planning commissioner hat first. And that really is just compatibility with zoning and the general plan. And if you can't, if you don't check those boxes, moving into design review is kind of pointless. And really, to echo my colleagues, I just look at the language of the zoning of the service commercial district to provide a transition between the more intense and the less intense. This building, as proposed, it is intense. It's arguably more intense than most of the commercial district. And so it, you know, it's it's not, it's not a transition. It's almost a return to the core. Commissioner Locke suggested that it's it's trying to become a plaza. And I had that same reaction, just there's there's a lot of commercial space in this building, not only on the street, but in a courtyard. And that is starting to look like Carmel Plaza. And beyond that, I then, I I also then started looking at the pieces of our code that just talk about really mass and scale. How big is this building? And the architect said that they are basically playing by the rules. And that may be true. But there's just a line. It's lot line to lot line and grade to 30 feet plus a little more. And that, I I agree with my colleagues that it's just, it's too much, especially given what the neighbor, the neighbors look like. And one thing in particular, and I still have some learning to do here, is this concept of the mezzanine. When our code says no building shall have more than two stories above grade, I I don't know, there's, if if I go up to the second floor and enter an apartment and then go up some stairs to a bedroom, I think I'm on the third floor. And so I I struggle with the the concept of the mezzanine. And I'm certainly open to learning about it. But, you know, the two-story versus three-story appearance, this is a three-story building, and it looks like one. I will go now to the I'll I'll just answer these questions, and then I'll also just say that having listened to the other three so far commissioners, I actually, I don't disagree with anything any of them have said. Inclusion of the restroom in the basement, I actually think it's a good idea. Square footage, too much roof projections, it's too big. It already is three-story. I think the building materials, I I can tell from the building materials that this is a very serious developer who wants to build a really high-quality building. And I encourage them to come back with that same level of quality, just with a different, perhaps more thoughtful design that's more in line with our zoning and our design guidelines. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Dells. This is a workshop, and I think as a workshop, it's been very successful. We've had a lot of, really, a lot of input from the public. We've had a lot of input from past commissioners and other officials of the city. We've had architects, prominent architects speak on this. And the purpose of this is to give direction to the applicant so they they can come forward with a successful project. I don't think I need to go into what's been said, because pretty much everything's been said. And I think the message to the developer is that this project needs to be redesigned for all the reasons that have been stated. The thing that I would like to, and I I don't want to, I don't want this to be a negative process for the for the applicant. I want it to be a process where they can find a way forward on this. I think everyone is sincere when they say we're very appreciative of somebody taking on this project and completing something which really the less applicant left pretty much a disaster for the community. And so I don't want to understate that, and we really do appreciate that. We're welcoming to the process. But having said that, any project has been stated by my fellow commissioners has to meet our commercial zoning, our commercial guy, and our our commercial guidelines. And that what what stands out to me is that the way to approach this is, of course, to read those and understand those. But it's about our, the zoning is about context. This is a transition area. It's the service commercial. Its focus is more on residential businesses, businesses that serve the locals. It's not meant to be another big draw for downtown with a bunch of, you know, retail spaces that are just tourist-serving. This is this, and so I think the comments, particularly by Commissioner Locke, were very relevant when she said that there needs to be less focus on the retail space and more focus on the residential space, and there needs to be affordable housing. And it's it's right up against a lot of affordable housing by the Carmel Foundation. And so when you're approaching a design like this, you don't want to have a large roof deck because you're right up against a bunch of residential use. And and a larger roof deck is going to have impact on that. And you want to look around the neighborhood and see what do the other buildings look like? And, you know, what is, what is the context? It has to fit in. The challenge for this building is there aren't any other two-story buildings on the street that I'm aware of. And so it's got to find a way to mitigate that. The previous building did that by creating a large step back, setback on the second story. They also use vegetation, a trellis, things to mitigate that that two-story impact from the street. You know, another thing, we can't, you know, the significance of this site is very important. So it, the challenge for the developer is to come up with something that really is better than than what was there and and, you know, provides a context that works with what's around it. You know, suggesting to throw a mural on the side of one wall is not a way to provide context or interaction with the art association. The previous building had a passageway through there. There were talks about having art display areas where artists, local artists, could display. Just throwing up a mural on the side of a building, which already has two different types of architecture that come from two different geographic areas and really are quite harsh together, is is not the way to do it. So you know, my comments, like I said, I want to put those in the context. I want to encourage the the architect, the applicant, to look at the context of what's here, understand that this is a transition area. Its focus should be on local use, and that's the type of project they need to come forward with. I think there's been a lot of good discussion about the fact that we don't want architecture that just copies or repeats, you know, past architectural styles. What we want to see in in our community are architectural styles which reflect what's happening today with a use of materials which make a connection to our past or to our local environment. So I think to us, which which would be a a real asset to the community, which will serve the local community, which will be in the context and which will make that transition into our residential use. So having said that, would staff like to make any more comments on this? Would the director like to make any more comments before we move on to our our next item on the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, no, thank you. I believe I believe staff, we have the direction that we need, and I believe the applicant does as well. So we very much appreciate the the commission and the public, especially, for coming out tonight and partaking in this workshop. I know it's difficult to do this, especially when we're in this virtual setting. So I do really appreciate the public coming out tonight. I think this is really an important step in this project, which, as you, everyone has mentioned, is is a monumental project for the village here.
Yeah, I want to, I want to also thank everybody that's participated in this again. And I think all the comments have been very impressive, very well-stated, and very clear, and I think that's going to be helpful to the applicant and the applicant's architect. So thank you very much for this project presentation. Okay, the next item on our public hearing tonight is the consideration of the fiscal year 2021 fiscal year capital improvements planned for consistency with the City of Carmel by the Sees General Plan. Can we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Brandon Swanson here with Community Planning and Building. So we're going to do a joint presentation between myself and Robert Harari, who's our Director of Public Works. Bob, as we like to call him, is going to be starting off the presentation. Just a quick overview. So we're going to try to go through this as quickly as we can. It's very important, obviously, but there's a lot of projects on here. The concept this year is that all the projects that have a potential for for the the city council to include in the budget this year have been brought forward for you to consider as consistent with the general plan. Does not mean that all these projects are going to be put forward. It's just so that we have more or less a menu of projects that could be considered by the city council as we're doing the budget work. The way that we're going to do this is Bob will explain the projects, the actual project themselves, and then I'll come right behind and do a, just a brief recap on consistency with the general plan, SEQA and permitting, sort of land use side of things. So Bob and I are going to tag-team this one. With that, I'll turn it over to Bob, and he'll he'll pop up the presentation for us here.
Can everyone see my screen now?
We got you, Bob. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Brandon. So that's the title. A little bit of background before we get into specific projects. In March of 2020, when COVID hit, all the, all the projects that were inactive at that time became unfunded, except for two construction projects that we just finished up. And in July 2020, for this current fiscal year, there was only one project, which was a small 88 project. So at this point, we essentially have no, no prior projects. In April of the city council meeting, a couple of weeks back, the council approved six urgent public safety projects for this current fiscal year. This still requires a planning commission conformity review, even though it's been funded. We haven't, it was, these are time-sensitive, so better late than ever. Also, in April, the council reviewed 32 potentially projects for this fiscal year. And as Brandon said, these projects, they're all on the menu. Certainly, we can't afford all of them, but we can afford some of them. And the council wants the flexibility to be able to, they can choose any one of these projects. So of course, we're going to request planning commission review, conformity review in all of them. And tonight, we have the conform review of all 38 projects. And then in June, the council approved the budget and the and the actual capital improvement projects. We have four different project categories that we'll go through, tag-team like Brandon mentioned. We have 14 projects that are facility and building project. We have nine that are more equipment, vehicles, and computer systems. We have nine natural resources and six for physical infrastructure. So we have 38 projects to share with you. Okay, so here's, here's the first batch. These are facility and building projects. I'll review the first five, and then we'll turn that over to Brandon. The first one is an emergency fire pump replacement at Sunset Center. This fire pump, we believe it was a power surge that caused the pump to fail. Without this pump, you cannot occupy Sunset Center. So there's been restricted access since then. The pump allows the sprinkler system to go, to go on, if there is a fire. And so, of course, we want to protect our historic resource. We want to make the building safe. This is a very fast project. In fact, we received the equipment last week, and it'll be installed next week. Police, second is the police dispatch renovation. And if you recall, I presented to the planning commission several times, the police building renovation project. That project was fully designed, approved for funding, well, it was approved for some funding. And when we opened bids, the bids were too high. And since that point of time, the project was was defunded. However, the police dispatch room really needs some interior interior work to renovate the dispatch room. It's, it's very difficult to work in there. We we have a grant for the specialized equipment and furniture that will go in there, but we need to remodel the building. So it will be a standalone mini project from within the umbrella of the larger renovation project. Next is a water filtration system at the Public Works yard. When we wash our vehicles, especially the street sweeper, we have to collect that water. That water could go into storm drains. we have to collect that water. That water could go into storm drains. We have to collect the water. There's oil, there's sediment. And the system we have now is just, it's really old and the parts are obsolete. So we just need a new one. We kind of replace it in the same location and it's about the same size. The next one is reopening facilities for continuously COVID guidelines. Not really a capital project per se, but it is funded as if it was one. We'll work on it now is to try to reopen City Hall and then we'll proceed with the other buildings. This is really a series of plexiglass and screens and barriers and air filters and doors and windows and all kinds of different things. Oh, I wouldn't say windows. But it's really to prevent the spread of COVID and it's all interior work. And this last one is for the Sunset Center exterior, a sampling the hazardous materials. We think we have lit paint. We think we have asbestos around the windows. So this is more like a pilot project to determine the extent of the of the hazardous materials. Repair some of the windows that are that have been blown out, actually. So we're going to kind of see what the magnitude of this problem is and then a subsequent project will be continuing the painting and window repairs. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brandon for these first four projects.
Thanks, Bob. And then just real quickly for the commission, if you're noticing the wacky numbering along the left hand side, that's my fault. We actually, we broke this up into the the sort of project categories that you're going to see. Those numbers go with another way we organize this for us for the budget. You know, I'm not a smart engineer like Bob. I'm just a planner. So numbers are hard for me. I apologize for the the wacky numbering on the left hand side. So please don't pay attention to that. But I'll I'll go through my section pretty quickly. So the exact same projects that Bob just walked you through. I'm going to go pretty quickly. And then if we get to the end, if you have any questions about consistency or sequel or anything like that, I can go at that point. But really, Bob's part of the presentation is the most important, explaining the projects to you. Long story short, spoiler alert, everything on this list that you're going to see today, we find is consistent with our general plan. For various reasons, and I tried to lay that out pretty concisely here in the matrix and then also in your staff report that you received. But in general, you know, we've got our land use and community character elements, our public facilities and services elements, which really carry all of these projects here. We're minimizing the generation of hazardous waste. We're making sure there's adequate public services. We're preserving historic resources. So all the projects that Bob just went through, in staff's opinion, are consistent with the general plan. You can see on here, we have anticipated SEQA action. Obviously, no SEQA actions taking place tonight because a general capital improvement plan and determiner determination of consistency is not a project under SEQA. So we're not doing any SEQA work tonight. This is just what we anticipate in the future. And you can see some of the permits that we think are going to have to take place. Some of them are more onerous than others, the water filtration system. We have to work with other outside agencies like NPDES, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Group and building permits. But that's really it. So all consistent here. We're in good shape. And so Bob, we'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, the next five projects are also facility and building oriented. The next one up is the library's master plan. The librarians have a lot of great ideas about renovating the various rooms. We've talked to architects. There's a lot of ideas. There's a lot of potential donations for these rooms. But we don't have a master plan. I think we need to develop this best plan with the help of an architect consultant. To just come up with a game plan, which project should happen for a second or third, what the cost estimates would be. So it's just be a working document that we can subsequently build future projects from. The next is a facility maintenance supplement. It's not, again, a specific capital project. It's just really a funding mechanism. What we did for this year is because of the need to compete for limited funding. We put things like facility maintenance supplemental funds in with specific capital projects like the library master plan. Because it's competing for the same limited pot of money. But this is not truly a capital project. This is this money because our older buildings are falling apart faster and faster and we are going through a lot of expenses to keep them well maintained. So it's just a budgetary increase. Of course, there'd be some interior, exterior repairs. But mostly mostly minor stuff, mostly ongoing maintenance oriented things. Next is our annual ADA upgrade project. This year, we did park bench and a and a water fountain, a piccadilly park and some restroom upgrades. And we'll probably do more of the same next year. And this is in accordance with our 2018 ADA transition study that was prepared by a CASP certified architect. Next is a backup generator at the Park Ranch Library. It's just replacing an old beat up generator that's if it worked to fail and in a storm, the library, the Park Ranch Library basement would flood again. We don't want that to happen again. So we'll need a backup generator to ensure that it's reliable. Next is energy efficiency projects. We're just embarking now, working with a consultant at no cost to the city who has been looking at our buildings and doing an assessment of possible energy efficiency projects. This is just kind of a blanket that we're coordinated with them. It's not a funding. It's not to be funded yet. But it's really, it's a mechanism to work with the consultant. See what kind of projects they propose. One project that we're kind of interested in is a possibility is solar panels at the Vista Boulevard parking area. So it'd be like shaded parking as well as solar. Again, it's that's just a future possibility. There's nothing approved at this point for that. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Brandon for his analysis.
Thanks, Bob. Once again, all these projects in staff's position and consideration are consistent with the city's general plan. Once again, we outline what the anticipated SEQA actions are. For all these projects, we're looking at either categorical or statutory exemptions for one reason or another, pretty basic planning or pretty basic permit process for most of these ones when we're in the facilities section. But you can see, you can see the sections of the general plan that we're finding it consistent with. You know, again, just, you know, interestingly, California Government Code 65401 requires that the CIP be reviewed by the planning commission for consistency. It doesn't actually require that everything be found consistent. Just that the consistency determination was done. In this case, staff is recommending that everything is consistent. But if the commission has further deliberation or wants to consider the consistency of any of these projects as we get to the end, we can talk about that. But these projects on the screen in front of you in staff's opinion are consistent with the city's general plan.
Next couple more projects. The next one is the built police building renovation. That's the big project that was unfunded. It's on the it's on the horizon. It's in the five year capital improvement plan. There was a little bit of discussion about possibly moving that project forward. Unlikely. But that's the project that was presented to the planning commission several times and it got to the point of opening bids when it was put on hold. Next is the Harrison Memorial Library renovations. This is kind of a concept wherein if the city were to invest in the main library painting, exterior, interior painting and carpeting, that potentially leverage donations for additional interior renovation work. So there would be exterior work, but be limited to the paint using the same paint colors. And then all the other work would be in the interior. The next is the backup generator at the Harrison Memorial Library. We have IT equipment in the basement that is not yet backed up with a generator. This has been a project that's been in the books for a couple of years. I don't think it was going to be funded this year, but it might be. It's a little bit of a challenge of where to put such a generator. But that's a detail that we can work out once we, if we have a funding board. And next is a scout house renovation design. There was a discussion a year ago about moving forward with the design of this of the scout house. If you recall, we did use some of the initial money and a grant to replace the roof, which was the most critical. For no longer rains in the scout house. But certainly, the scout house is not habitable at this point. And this would be to get the design going so we can ultimately use the building again. Back to Brandon.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Once again, not to sound like a broken record, all of these items are consistent. You can see we're expecting all of these to be categorically exempt. Mostly, mostly building permits, some design review and coastal development permits for things like the police building renovation. And you can see that they all fall under the public facilities and services elements of our general plan. Back to you, Bob.
Okay, now we're moving on to IT equipment and vehicles. The first is to replace two existing police vehicles with newer ones. Pretty self explanatory. The next is a radio antenna for the police building. It would be half funded by a, I think it's a federal grant. This would be to replace an existing tall radio antenna on top of the police building. So that's my understanding. It's about the same height. It's just replacing the one that's there now with new technology. The next is a really wild and crazy idea would be to digitize the property files in the planning and community planning and building offices. I'm sure you've all been in the office where you've seen filing cabinets all over the place. And Brandon and his team were suggesting that we start to scan all those property files and tie them into a GIS mapping tool. And this this might be a multi year project because of the funding that's involved. But at least it will be a start to get out of the maintaining files from 100 years old. The next is just to replace the ambulance with one that's more reliable. Straightforward. The next is 22 police radios. This would be able to be compatible with the county and other regional partners in for emergency. And I think that's it for that page and back to you, Brandon.
Thanks, Bob. So once again, we've we've basically got equipment purchases here, most of which are not a project under SEQA. As you can see, the the projected SEQA action is just not a project. The one that we we would potentially see some impacts from is the radio antenna. But as Bob said, it's going back in the same location, roughly the same height. So we don't have visual impact issues. But again, all of these we find are consistent with our general plan. All but one are for our public facilities and services elements and the public access to digital files. It brings us to our land use and community character for preserving and protecting our historic resources, meaning most notably our files, many of which in this office are near 100 years old. So thank you. All consistent. Next one, Bob.
Okay. Next is a record retention schedule for the city clerk. It's a software program and it's digitizing records to ensure that we're following the state or same requirement that it's for filing. The next one is computer service resilience. It's just, it would be upgrading in our computer system to ensure uninterrupted public service. Next is the development of our GIS phase two. I think this was presented to you, the planning commission maybe a year or two ago on the foundational GIS system we have developed. And it it's accessible to the public now, but there's a whole, there's a long way to go to really make it useful for day to day operations. What we're proposing is a phase two would be to help with the permitting process as well as code compliance and building and public work plan reviews. So that would be a great project, unlikely to be funded at this time. Next is the uninterrupted power supply. UPS for the backup to computer systems. How that one is different from the other one, I do not know, but there is a difference.
Thanks, Bob. Once again, all consistent. I think it's important to note at this point, just in case commissioners, if you're wondering, you know, why things like a records retention schedule, which is really just a written policy or, you know, buying a server is on our capital improvement list. You know, this, this, our CIP here in the city of Carmel by the Sea is a bit of a hybrid model. We do have projects on here. Typically, your CIP is going to be mostly focused on infrastructure and physical improvements, which is why we do this general plan consistency determination and why it's required by the state of California. Because typically, they're physical and physical projects that have a potential foreseeable impact on the environment. We do it a little bit differently around here. We are Carmel and so we like to be unique. We do have some projects on here that are not technically physical improvements, but we've included them in the consistency. So if there's any confusion about that, why we're why we're talking about record retention schedule and consistency with the general plan and what SEQA might look like. We just have it all in here together so that our bases are covered because it's going forward as part of our CIP. Even though it's not technically an infrastructure improvement. So with that ramble, all of these are consistent. I'll turn it back over to Bob.
We do save the best for last. We're not quite there at the last yet, but we do have actual infrastructure projects that come at the end. So I stand by for that. All right, the next, this is the natural resources category. The first is to hire a consultant to prepare a greenhouse gas emissions forecast study. This will be working with the climate, the climate committee. And it would be part of a climate action plan. So it's it's a study only. There's no physical work to be done at that point. The next is Mission Trail Nature Preserve Stream Stability Project. This speaks for design and permitting, but not not construction yet. We received a per capita grant from the county park district. And we're going to be designing three small drainage projects to preserve the creek and the stream bed admission trail. Basically, these three small drainage projects include, what is this, a storm drain? One's a little raised foot bridge. And one is this minor grading in the channel, all near the Rio Road entrance. And this was a, this work would be done in accordance with the 2019 stream stability study report. Next is a forest forestry management plan. We do have a forestry management plan. Public Works is very old. It's outdated. So this will be working with a consultant to help us put together a more modern plan to address what has worked and what hasn't worked so well in Carmel. What we should be looking to planting for climate change and that type of thing. Next is a wildfire risk assessment. It's, we're hoping to be able to do this as a partnership with other local fire agencies. But it's just to evaluate the the risk that we have for fire fuel or for a wildfire in town and what we could do to mitigate it before such a thing would happen. And last is a North Dunes Habitat Restoration Project. This is kind of an annual project. This would be ongoing biological monitoring. We're hoping to potentially do additional tree removals, interpretive signage. And we are in the process of amending the coastal development permit. I think that's it for that page. Oh, you are trying that.
Thanks, Bob. So as you mentioned, we're getting into some more of the physical improvements. Some of the bigger projects on here, like the Mission Trail Nature Preserve Project and the North Dunes Habitat. We may be looking at some more, some more involved environmental work, things like initial studies, mitigated negative declarations. We'll have to see as the scopes of those projects progress, but there may be a little bit more SEQA work to do on those, including because they're larger projects, we may be involved with more state agencies like Department of Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers, Coastal Commission, things like that. Again, all of these items are consistent. The general plan elements we're touching mostly here are environmental safety, open space and conservation and our land use and community character and our coastal access and recreation elements. You can see these projects because they are, many of them are improving or protecting habitat where, you know, protecting the natural beauty and our resources. Maintaining our parks. We actually have development of the of the North Dunes Master Plan as one of our general plan sections. In minimizing impacts to trees and things like that. So all of these items in staff's opinion are consistent with the general plan. Thanks, Bob.
And the next would be, we have a water well in Mission Trails, the nature preserve, and it's it's next to a above ground tank. It's an attractive nuisance. We we need to decommission the well. The well's been abandoned, but it hasn't been legally decommissioned. So this would be to decommission the well and also to remove the tank. Next is a sea level rise coastal engineering report. This would be looking at the beachfront. This is the next step for the climate committee. The focus right now is the greenhouse gas emission study and the vulnerability assessment and the climate action plan. But phase two would be getting involved with the coastal engineering work that needs to be done on the beachfront to to armor coat our our bluffs for future storm or future sea level rise. Next is the stormwater ordinance. This is really just to help do some of the research. It's a small project. It's, we do need to update our stormwater ordinance to meet current state laws. We have someone, our environmental compliance manager is able to do most of this work. But sure, it takes a lot of research. He doesn't have that time to do so. So it's me asking a consultant to help us with the research and putting together the the ordinance. And last is a beach sand survey and wall inspections. This is based on recommendations of past studies. That we can be monitoring our beach sand on an annual basis. We need to get started on doing. We need to get started on doing that, and this kind of ties in with the sea level rise issue. Again, this should just be a study, only no, no physical impacts at this time. All right, you, Brandon.
All right, thanks, Bob. Just like with the last slide, we've got a lot of infrastructure and habitat improvement projects here. So again, we're going with, a couple may require some additional Sequoia work, but for the most part, these ones are exempt in one way or another. We have, we have consistency in staff's opinion with the general plan here. We're touching on the same elements, public facilities, open space and conservation, environmental safety, which, which are very important, obviously. We're protecting natural habitats, minimizing hazards, and then things like that. So in staff's opinion, all of these projects are consistent with the city's general plan.
Finally, we're up to physical infrastructure. These are the, you know, who work in the field type of projects. First one is our annual paving project. This project was probably designed when, when COVID put it on hold, so now it's freshening off the plans and getting ready to go out to bid if it is funded. This work includes resurfacing to Nipperell between Third and Ocean, San Carlos between Eighth and 13th Avenues, San Antonio from Fourth to Eighth, except for the intersection at Ocean, which would be a year later. This would include a San Carlos bike route, which is in the general plan. This is, this is, I call it the, the hub of, of a future bike route system throughout the city. This is kind of a central point as you can get, and then from there, over time, we can go from the San Carlos bike route and branch into different directions. Also, this would be for some landscaped islands on San Carlos between 11th and 13th. And also include sidewalk repairs, predominantly on west side of Mission Street between Third and Sixth, but there's also a few other locations. So this would be resurfacing streets that's based on our city's pavement management system. We have some meeting islands that are landscaped, bike route signage, there's no new sidewalks being created, but there are sidewalks being repaired. And any kind of impacts would be very temporary, like traditional paving projects, there might be some temporary noise and traffic detours, could potentially be some loss of parking spaces due to those landscaped islands. But that's all we need to say about that project. Next is the drainage system repairs. We recently completed our first citywide storm drain master plan, and it identified many repairs that are needed or consisting underground infrastructure. We have a lot of broken elements of pipe. We have pipes that have collapsed. We have box culvers that go into nowhere. And we also have bottlenecks in our system. So the, so when it rains, we do have some minor flooding at certain locations, predominantly because we have bottlenecks. So this is just to begin the maybe 10-year program of designing and then alternate years constructing the physical repairs to the drainage system and eliminating the bottlenecks. The next is Sixth Avenue Devondorf Park Plaza. There would be no, not even design, no construction at this point. The thought here is to begin to reach out to the public, community outreach, potentially do a, a design charrette or two, and just to see engaged public input, engage public interest in going forward with a plaza. This would be to expand Devondorf Park to the north. That would eliminate Sixth Avenue, and it would go up to the front door of the Schultzen's Library. And Sixth Avenue would essentially become like a central plaza. So again, this is just, these are concepts, there's nothing, there's no plan at this point, but this would be to get, get the ball rolling. The next is we are anticipating a grant to put in split rail fencing along the medians on Ocean Avenue. Apparently, there's a photo I have from 1958 or so that there used to be, actually, there is some split rail fencing on those medians years ago. And the intent is to prevent jaywalking. This certainly would come back to the planning commission once we have a design. It's just, it's, this is a project if it's funded by, by the grant or by donation. Next is the scenic pathway phase two barrier rails. We want to thank our Carmel cares partners for the great work they've done in improving the landscaping out along the scenic pathway. If you haven't been out there in a, in a while, please take a look. It's a, it's really, it's, it's really come a long way. Phase two would be to physically replace the barrier rails that are between the pathway and the top of the bluffs. Those railing was built in the mid-1980s or late 1980s, and there's just, they've been exposed to the elements and they're, they're deteriorated. So this would be to replace that, it would be more of a consistent appearance. And next is a wave finding signs. This would be funded from the Transportation Agency of Monterey County. These are not, there's some misunderstandings in the past. These are not big green signs like on the highway where it says Carmel half mile ahead. This would be like a site-specific wooden signs that has an arrow, for example, Mission, arrow pointing straight up, Beach, arrow pointing to the left, Sunset Center, arrow pointing to the right, that type of thing. And I think that's it. Back to you, Brandon.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, just, just to reiterate the point that Bob made there, none of these projects are being approved tonight or being considered by the planning commission. This is really just a determination of consistency of the project scope with the general plan. So once again, we have all the projects that are consistent. Again, we're back to many of the public facilities and services. We do have some open space and conservation elements that, that may be ticked here with the Devondorf Park. And we have some coastal access and recreation elements with the scenic pathway and wave finding signs as well. Once again, these are all consistent in staff's opinion. Back to you, Bob.
Okay, so our recommendation is to adopt the resolution finding this proposed CFP for the current fiscal year and next fiscal year that is consistent with the, the general plan. I would definitely happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Director Harar or Director Swanson from the commissioners?
Yes, I, um.
Mr. Lehman?
Yeah, I, um, I have a question on item number 25, the, the wayfaring signs. Will this come before the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Except for that question and then council.
Okay, that's great. That's all I wanted to know.
So it's, so it's my understanding that any of these physical improvement projects, they come before the planning commission prior approval?
Any, any projects that require approval by the planning commission? Some of the physical projects like street improvements may be within Bob's review to do, but anything that would require designer view per normal would come to the planning commission. So yeah, these, these are just basically giving you a heads up on the projects that are going to be on the budget.
And again, we're not going to, the council's not going to fund all these projects. It would be certainly a smaller subset of these projects, but again, we're just giving council the menu of opportunity to pick any projects they want to.
So these, as you just said, these, these haven't been funded. So there's, these are, it's up to the council to ultimately decide what they're going to fund?
That is correct.
But this is your, this is your, this is your list, your menu of possible projects for the upcoming fiscal year?
This is not anyone's personal list. This is a list from the community, from council members, from prior studies, from lots of different people, so.
I don't mean your list, Bob, but.
If you saw.
I'm sure Bob's list is so long, you didn't even want to think about it.
I do have one more question, or suggestion. On a continuing basis over the last four years or so, we've been talking about replacing the chairs in the council chambers. Is there any way to get that on that list?
I second it. I've never even sat in those chairs, and I would support that.
Thank you.
We might be able to be creative and see what we can do with that supplemental building maintenance account. But no, that's not a, that's not a project that has been discussed, and I think the prior council did discuss that for the CFP at one point, and it was not approved.
Is the, is the recent relief bill, federal relief bill that was passed, does that provide some opportunities for funding for the city?
Yes, I think it was $717,000 that, that we received, and that's part of the budget process. And if I may, next week, May the 4th, at the council meeting, there is the budget presentations. This is unveiling of the full budget for next fiscal year with, with a subset of those projects that we think would fit the budget for, for council's review. But it does include the $717,000, and it addresses, it makes some, some set aside for the pension, unfunded pension liability as well. So I want to make comments. If you want to suggest the chairs or any other project for that matter, feel free to chime in on next Tuesday, and that would be a perfect opportunity to express any kind of project you want.
Hey, Bob, I have a question. Um, what is the story with Dolores Street and the planters that are on the east side in the tree wells at this point?
When we, we had a project, it was called the Downtown Tree Project. We identified locations to put trees in the, in new tree wells on Dolores Street. We had had it marked by PG&E, they showed a gas line closer to the building. They said, oh, great, let's put the, let's cut out these tree wells, and we'll put trees in there. Well, so far, so good. When we started to put trees in, we found the gas line ran all the way along the center, six inches below the sidewalk on the center of it. So exactly the worst possible place to put trees. So PG&E, once again, kind of gave us a hard, a hard time. I tried to get it relocated, and I don't think we can live that long. We, then the next step is we put some shrubs in, like some hardy shrubs that have since been trepped on, they didn't last very long. There has been talk about just boring concrete and being done with it. There's talk about continuing or to put potted plants at these locations. I think we did that on, on the west side of Dolores, right?
Yeah, no, on the east side, they currently have potted plants.
Okay, well, it is the same location, okay. So we're trying different, but they're probably never going to be trees in there, so we're probably going to have to patch up the concrete one day.
And I have, can I ask another question? Or just make a comment? So on the annual paving project, I hope that will be considered as a really high priority. And in particular, I know that getting those islands in on San Carlos down to the south would be very important for traffic control, and also the sidewalk on Mission is horrible, and I've seen people fall too many times at this point, and I know it's a big liability. And I'd like to see the paving down on San Antonio because I've been advocating to get a crosswalk across Ocean Avenue at San Antonio.
Speaking of that, if I may, Brendan and Police Chief and I are on the Traffic Safety Committee. That, that very crosswalk was on the agenda. It was recommended by the Traffic Committee. It's going to happen when we start our stripe, our pavement, striping and curb painting and crosswalks. So you'll see it soon.
Excellent, thank you.
It'll be on the, on the west side.
Yeah, thank you.
Great.
Okay, are there any other questions for the directors regarding the proposed budget, CIP, plan?
Mr. Chair, if I could ask before we end the item, just out of curiosity, did any of the commissioners have any issues, or were you happy with the formatting of the Excel sheet and the staff report? Because we want to try to build some consistency in this over the, you know, we're going to have to come to you every year for this. So what, Bob and I worked on this in an effort to try to make something that we could reproduce every year, and you get to use to seeing the same thing and the same type of staff report. So I'd appreciate any feedback the commission might have on that.
I love the tag team.
That was good.
Okay.
I thought it was, I thought it was, I was really impressed the minute I saw it. I thought it was very organized, it was easy way to read, it's a lot of information to digest, and having it put together this way was really helpful, and I liked, I liked the tag team presentation, too.
And no comments on the numbering system?
Well, we got it, we.
We did it.
Well, Bob and I will work on a little better comedy routine for next year.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have, do we have to add? I think we have to ask for a public comment.
We do, yes. We need to adopt the resolution, thank you.
Yeah, is there anyone from the public who'd like to make any comments to the planning commission regarding the capital improvement plan and its consistency with the general plan?
Mr. Chair, it looks like Dale Byrne's hand is up, but it may be left over from the first item. I don't know if that's the case or not.
Dale, are you, did you want to make a comment? Are you still there, Dale?
It's been up for an hour.
Yeah, I imagine it's, it's from the original one, but just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think he left.
Okay.
He's still there. Okay, I don't hear anybody, so commissioners, do you have comments?
I don't have any, thank you.
Mr. Locke, comments?
Nope.
Mr. Bolton?
No, I appreciate the report, it was well presented. Thank you.
Commissioner Delph?
No, no.
Okay, I think, Mr. Locke, were you beginning to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution attached to the staff report determining that the city's fiscal year 2020, 21, and 2021, 22 capital improvement plan is consistent with the city's general plan.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the capital improvement plan and its consistency with the general plan. Any more discussion? During the roll call, please.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Delph?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair Lepage?
Yes, the motion is passed. I think that, do we, do we have any comments from the director about future agenda items?
Not about future agenda items, Mr. Chair, no, thank you.
Okay, our next, our next regular meeting is going to be May 12th. I want to thank all of you. I thought all the comments tonight on the workshop were excellent. Everybody really did their homework, so thank you so much. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, good night.
Good night, thank you.